Please stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we take roll call, please?
Chairman Williams.
Here.
Vice Chairman Severs.
Here.
Secretary Richardson.
Here.
Member Spidey.
Here.
Member Bobbitt. Member Hare. Alternate member Noel Copeland.
Here.
And we have quorum. Next is approval of minutes for November 20, 2019.
Move we approve the minutes of November 20, 2019.
Sir, second?
Second.
Hold in favor, say aye.
I have two corrections.
Okay.
I read them up. We're good.
Okay, Vice Chair.
On page four of your agenda, the first page of the minutes, down where there was some discussions about advertising that says Vice Chair Severs said he spoke to someone regarding the pervious payment item, but this is a quasi judicial item. It should say this is not a quasi judicial item. And on the last page of the minutes, page 13 of your agenda, page 10 of the minutes, I was discussing the handout I had given out. And also I asked a legal question as to whether or not the ordinance 27-2019 applied to the Brookshire development or permit. And as I recall, the answer was no, it did not. That is not reflected in the minutes. I believe it should be reflected in the minutes.
Okay. So does the, I don't know. Motion, are you good with?
Yeah.
Corrections and second holds? Members Spidey.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All person to anticipate speaking on any public hearing item must first fill out the oath card contained there to be heard on the agenda item and sign the oath card contained thereon. These cards are located on the table near the entrance to the council chamber or may be obtained from the recording secretary. This meeting will be conducted in accordance to procedures adopted in Resolution 24-1997. Those speaking in favor of a request will be heard first, those opposed will be heard second, and those who wish to make a public comment on an item will speak third. The applicant may make a brief rebuttal if necessary. A representative from either side or against may cross-examine a witness. Anyone who speaks is considered a witness. If you have photographs, sketches, or documents you desire the commission to consider, they must be submitted into evidence and will be retained by the city. Please submit such exhibits to the recording secretary. Staff, has all items been properly advertised? And has anybody spoken to anybody in the public about the items coming before us? I'm thinking all these, these really doesn't matter, but.
We just want to say that everything has been advertised correctly with the exception of one item, or a couple items, which is, well, the 9A, which is being withdrawn and was advertised, but the applicant has requested that withdrawn. And then 8A, which is the wetland survey, when we get to that item, we'll explain what's going to happen with that one.
Okay.
We're actually going to request that we continue to 2020.
Okay. All right, with that, if you'd go to the first item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item concerns an ordinance that would amend the code to require that wetland surveys be consistent with the St. John's River Water Management District standards. This item is being withdrawn by staff administratively to allow the TEC to review the item at their regular meeting on January 15. The item would then be considered by this board on the 22nd of January. And that's all I have for this item.
Okay, so if it's been withdrawn by staff, then there's no table, no nothing? Or how do we proceed on that? Are you saying it's being withdrawn, or are you asking us to table it and move it?
I believe it probably would be cleaner, since it was tabled by you, and just to make sure that we're doing this correctly, maybe we ask the P&amp;Z to table it to their January 22 meeting. Council has already tabled their, their public hearing to later in January, so I'll defer to.
Correction is just that the public hearing has been advertised for city council to hear the item on December 10. And the, at the first reading of the item, council said that they plan to table it at the advertised hearing date, which is December 10. So it hasn't been tabled yet, but that was their expressed plan. And so council has basically asked this group to table it to January 22, as Brad indicated.
Okay. Ms. Richardson?
I would move to table, but since it's on the agenda, should we ask if anybody's here to speak on it?
Well, I think if, I think if we are, we don't want to have additional information. I defer to you on, because we've done this before where we've tabled the items, we don't, we don't open to the public, we leave it there. Because, but then again, this, this is not really one of those items we have to worry about. Or is it?
Are there any cards?
No, sir.
Okay, I move we table ordinance number 46, 2019 to January 22, 2020.
For second?
My second.
Okay, can we take a vote on this?
Member Spidey.
Yes.
Secretary Richardson.
Yes.
Member Noel Copeland.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Severs.
Yes.
Chairman Williams.
Yes. Okay, next item.
Thank you, sir. The next item is an ordinance for the updating of the five-year, are we going? Oh, the small scale amendment. Right, the next item is actually the small scale amendment number 3-2019. The item has been withdrawn by the applicant. So there would be no public hearing on the item.
Okay. Vice Chairman.
As I understand, the item has been withdrawn. Certainly, there's no action necessary. I just, I wasn't on the planning and zoning commission at the time. This was considered as far as a sketch plat, which this is a part of a sketch plat process. I just want to confirm that those properties on the original sketch plat that were designated for community parks will be the, will be constructed per the sketch plat and I gather a part of the approved preliminary plat. Is that correct? I just want to make sure I understand what's transpiring.
The preliminary plat for that Phase One, or what's called Willow Creek Phase One subdivision, should be as consistent as possible with the approved sketch plat, which you and the city council saw unapproved. If there are any deviations to that, we will determine whether that needs to come back to you. As far as I understand, I'm not sure what the status is of the actual preliminary plat. I think it has already been approved. And so I'll, I can confirm to see what, if that was indeed true and what's been consistent with it.
Number one, I appreciate the information you sent to me. A part of that information was what appeared to me to be the preliminary plat and a permit that had been issued for, on October the 2nd, for commencement of construction. It's, it's materials I read. I just wanted to make sure.
That's correct. There was a permit issued for, to go forward.
Okay.
With that Phase One, but we do not have a final plat of it yet, so.
All right, so if we go to the next item, please.
The next item is a, an ordinance, ordinance number 45-2019, which would update the five-year capital improvement schedule of the comprehensive plan. Do you have a presentation?
Before you start, we typically try to put these presentations, we tried to once, once before. We didn't, weren't able to have time to do it today. Just have it set up on your computer so that when we go through the slides, you'll be able to see it. But I did put it on the Agenda Star. On, so if you minimize your, your agenda and then open up Agenda Star app, that's on your, on your desktop there, you will see the presentation. And then you'll be able to control it as to which slide you would like to look at it, or just follow along with us. So Gabriel will be going through, will be available to the public, but on, on the screens up here, but just not on your computers. You won't be able to control what you see there. Unless you have any questions, or if you have any problems finding that, please tell us.
I pushed Agenda Star and I didn't get it.
It wasn't the star, it's the, it says view, view remote presentation.
Okay.
Okay, so you bring everything down, you clear your screen, you'll see it in the middle of it, and it's square. It says VNC on it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Per section 163.31773B of the Florida statutes, the city must annually update the five-year capital improvement program of the CIE. The plan needs to consider the need for and location of public facilities and provides, quote, "a component that outlines principles for construction, extension, or increase in capacity of public facilities, as well as a component that outlines principles for correcting existing public facility deficiencies which are necessary to implement the comprehensive plan." And the CIE is required to be updated every year. A concurrency is the need for improvements to be in place or planned in order to accommodate growth. There are seven concurrency-related facilities that are supposed to be addressed in the schedule of capital improvements. Transportation parks and schools are optional, but must be addressed to maintain level of service standards in the comprehensive plan. And we've provided some examples of level of service standards. Potable water being 96.4 gallons per capita per day. Provision of parks, eight acres of park per 1,000 residents. And the transportation component, level of service E for arterial and collector roads. The five-year schedule is supposed to include improvements that will help the city maintain the level of service standards for concurrency-related facilities, such as FDOT-maintained roads and county-maintained parks. The schedule includes maintenance and upgrades to water and sewer infrastructure, a couple of stormwater maintenance items, and vehicles for solid waste removal. Due to hurricane damage, park replacement items are also on the schedule with FEMA's support. The transportation schedule includes the resurfacing of streets to be funded by the CRA and the downtown and the community development block grant in the target area. Additional transportation products are sidewalk infill using impact fees and trails, and bicycle lanes using general funds and grants. Long-term planning strategies, strategies currently being undertaken include the multimodal master plan and the resiliency strategic plan, called Resilient Titusville. In June 2019, we adopted a multimodal master plan, which primarily focused on improvements to the sidewalks, on-street bicycle lanes, and trails. The purpose of the plan was to help the city better connect to the state's regional tri-trail network. Earlier this year, you heard a presentation on the B map. The city approved this year's budget with a line item to help implement the B map with water quality improvements. We did not include that item to the CIE, but we can if the commission recommends it to the city council. The public works estimated $200,000 to $250,000 annually with funding from the Stormwater Utility to help implement the B map. The final work plan is the Water Resource Department's reclaimed water master plan. The department will work with a consultant to help develop a long-term strategic plan for reclaimed water improvements. And finally, the CIE ordinance adopts the schools, school district's five-year work plan by reference. This year, the most recent five-year schedule was adopted earlier this year. There are no planned school capacity improvements in Titusville. And this concludes the presentation. The item is in, sure, page, starts on page 23 of the agenda. And the proposed drafts of the capital improvement schedules start on page 30. And end on page 37. Thank you.
Okay. You're, you're done?
Yes.
Okay, questions? Member Noel Copeland.
Are we going to walk through the, each table? Oh, sorry. Are we going to walk, walk through each table, or should we just ask questions if we have them on specific items?
We're just going to take your questions.
Okay, so on page 31, I'm on the potable water slide. And it says, this is an example, in fiscal 20, it says $250,000. And then no other planned monies for repairing drink water storage. Are we saying that's just because we don't know where any other money would come from at this point? Or are we saying we honestly think for four years, there won't be any repair needed to that system?
This was an item that was, that's in our, was carried over from our current budget that was approved. So I'm going to say that this is probably a planned project that they intend to do now. And they just don't have any plans for any other types of projects, because they're probably not needed for the next few years. This is annually updated, so if they do anticipate something that comes up, it needs to be done immediately or very soon, they'll definitely, that'll be another opportunity to add something in there. So typically, when you see the same number in every year, it means there's a recurring need to maintain.
No, I'm more interested in the ones where there was no money.
Yeah.
You know, like the, the line underneath that, distribution system improvements, in all the other years, it's a quarter of a million dollars, but for 20, there's no money.
Right, they probably were not able, or, because we have the budget, the bottom line. So that particular, for a distribution system improvements, for example, might have been something that might have only had to wait till the next year before they can request that as part of the budget. So they're anticipating that. And just weren't able to get that money allocated for that particular project now, because there's a need for something else.
Okay. Okay, all my questions are similar to that, like why is there only money in 20 and no monies? Like if you look at the parks, same thing. You know, we, I would imagine that we would estimate that there could be a hurricane and we could need some monies for, you know, restoration post-hurricane. On the roads and streets, there's almost no money in fiscal 20 for sidewalk, sidewalk, lighting. I mean, there's almost no money in 20, but yet we've allocated monies for 21, 22, 23, and 24. It just looks odd that we don't think that we need to spend any money for any of these things this year, but that we do think, you know, the Barna Avenue Trail, there's money in 21, 22, and 23, but not the other years. So is that a three-year project that's going to happen during those three years? Is that the way to read this?
The Barna, well, that sample, the Barna Avenue Trail, is something that's new.
Right.
And something that was recommended out of the multimodal master plan that was recently adopted. So the Public Works Director, from what I understand, introduced that as part of the five-year plan, but not up, didn't put it in the first year because the money just wasn't available. The money was allocated for other things at this moment. So he's put it in for next year to give the city a heads up, hey, we'd like to see if we can try and get money allocated for that. Now, when it comes time for next year's budget, we'll see if there's money available to, to start with that project. If not, then it'll probably have to be bumped out again. So sometimes you're going to see that, you'll see some items being carried out or pushed out another year, just because the funding's not available at that time.
And then I had, I think my last question is on page 35. And it's just a missing funding source on the US 1 from La Grange to just south of Minny.
Okay.
There's just no funding source listed, so you just, we just need to update the table before it goes to council or wherever it goes next.
We'll do that. Yeah, this will go to city council.
Okay, those are my questions. Thank you.
I want to add on that real quick. So in, in past years, I've had the same questions, and since then, I've kind of looked at it a little differently. I think it would be better if there was a differentiation between sustainment versus project. Some of these, they look like specific projects for repairs and stuff like that. Others would be a sustainment for a particular system, whether it be, or we'll just say maintenance, okay, for like sidewalk repairs and, you know, trail connections, or, you know, I think, or, you know, carried out projects. But I'm just saying, the way it looks, it's always looked kind of funny that we don't project out past, for five years. We just project this one year and then the rest are blank.
Yeah, it's supposed to be a five-year plan.
Yeah, and so that's all I wanted to add on that. Secretary Richardson?
I have a couple of questions. The first question deals with water reuse. Is that under some other label? Nothing says water reuse in this, these charts.
The schedule, the bare minimum for what the statute requires is that we have a five-year schedule that addresses planning, future planning, and for growth to, to plan for concurrency-related facilities. So reclaimed water is not a listed concurrency-related facility by statute. Water, potable water, sewer, infrastructure, stormwater, those things are, are listed as a concurrency-related facility. City could certainly add in another table in here, a schedule that talks about reclaimed water as an additional schedule on here, but it's not something that's minimum required by statute for the CIE. If, those kind of improvements, though, would already be, there are a lot of other improvements that you don't see here that are capital improvement related, that are inside our budget, that go, that are adopted every year with our city's budget. What you see here are just those capital improvements items, from that budget, that are related to helping us maintain concurrency-related level of service standards. So reclaimed water is not one of them.
Okay, we'll talk about that later. Road resurfacing, it just has a number plug of 710,466. Is there any indication of what roads will be resurfaced in 20?
We, it's a good question. We, every year this gets adopted, we actually create a, an online interactive map. It's available to public, right, and right, we're in the process of updating it. And so we work with the Public Works Department to find out, what are they planning to do for this year? And so we try to identify those segments of those roads that they plan to do for this year, based on, for, and identify that on the interactive map. So we are working with them on that. They update it every year. They don't plan it out, five years out, from what I understand. So they really just kind of see what they can possibly do with each year's budget, and then plan out which segments they'll do at that time. As soon as we have that information, we'll get that available to you.
Have they decided which roads are, I, because nice and crazy mess with all the growth that's come on that road. It's a pothole express, I call it.
That's something we can find out for you, yeah.
That's all I have right now.
Vice Chairman Severs.
I appreciate the fact on page 26 of the materials, it indicates that there will be a reclaimed water master plan that is in the process of being reviewed or developed as such. And I appreciate the fact that that is in there. In the paragraph above, I'm a little concerned about the language where it says, the last sentence in the paragraph above that, "The extension of reclaimed lines may be utilized if feasible and capable, if capacity is available to alleviate the water demands for landscaping or commercial uses as the development occurs." I just want to make sure that that can cover and does cover residential, because I can see how it can be interpreted different ways, as, as presently worded. And clearly, we want the residential users of reclaimed water as such. Kind of the same question that Mr. Richardson asked, looking at the five-year capital improvement for sanitary sewer, I do not see reclaimed water. I know historically, looking back at budgets, it pretty well always contained about $200,000 for extensions up until about 2014. I, I think the city needs to, in implementing the comprehensive plan as presently worded, extend reclaimed water lines to the two areas of critical concern as the com, as the comprehensive plan presently contemplates and should be included in a capital improvements plan. The, the last concern I have is in the capital improvements for stormwater. And I kind of raised this when Mr. Cook was here, because again, I don't see any, any capital improvements for improvements for the stormwater system discharging into the Indian River. I know there are other budget items, but I do think we. I know there are other budget items, but I do think we need to plan ahead and have a part of a capital improvements plan on, on that issue. I, I think that sends a good statement to everyone that we are trying to help improve the water quality going into the Indian River. That's my comments.
Okay. If we could go to page twenty-six at the bottom, the last few sentences. Some of the things that concerned me was, um, was the language concerning, uh, the Water Resource Department. And basically, what they're saying is if you were to take, um, if you were to take, uh, the build-out of the equivalent residential units, it's saying that it slightly exceeds capacity. And, and so this is something that, that I've brought up in the past, okay? So then if you go to the next page, on page twenty-seven, it's basically saying, it brings in the twenty forty plan. It talks about the, uh, twenty eighteen year of using a one point five seven percent. And then I think the twenty forty uses a one percent, is that correct? Anyway, where I'm getting at is it's basically saying that we have a fixed capacity of resources. And this is what we've talked about before, which is a concern for me. Because what we're doing is we're shooting to maximize our population while we're admitting that in our five-year plan, that our facilities can't accommodate. Um, it's saying that the wastewater plants, uh, can't accommodate the build-out of twenty forty. Um, it says that the, I think the consumptive use, uh, let's see. I think it tried to give an explanation on some of this. And then, uh, in the second paragraph, it kind of gives an explanation. I think there might be an alternate, uh, explanation to this, and that's because we have seasonal populations. Um, and I think that's a huge factor, uh, that needs to be accounted for. I mean, just condos alone have, um, I mean, that, that's becoming a, a big portion of our community. And they may only have fifty percent population, uh, for the majority of the year. But going back to my, my point on this is that I worry that we're acknowledging that we're going to have to increase our capacities for water. It looks like we're currently at about eighty percent capacity, um, of what we're capable of using. And so we have to find new sources. And then we can't treat, uh, the wastewater if we build out. And so I, I just, I see us heading in a direction without, and we need to start looking if, if we're, one plan is pushing forward to increase population, this plan needs to solve that problem that the other plan is potentially creating. And it's not doing that, it's just saying, we acknowledge there's an issue. So I just, you only get a good look at this every five years, um.
Oh, mate, this is a monitoring program. So that's what a state asks us, every community to do this. It's a monitor, an annual monitoring program to make sure that you are planning for the growth that's coming. You can, and so people are coming to your city. Uh, whether you like it or not, I mean, you can't stop growth, it's going to happen, people are going to be there. So how are you going to accommodate that new population? And that's what this tool is about, that's what the city, the state requires every community to do. Kind of look at this every year.
I agree, but you don't punch the gas, you know?
Not.
And, uh, and that's what I feel like we're doing. So yes, it, it is, you're right, it's a monitoring tool. But at the same time, it's, um, it's a tool to acknowledge that we have a, an issue. And then you plan with those issues that you've acknowledged. I don't, I'm just saying that I think that this is, we need to go back to the intent of the capital improvement. If this is the direction we're going, then the money needs to reflect that. And, you know, it's, I don't feel like it is. So that's the intent of us looking at this, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to, um, maybe have a conversation, to sit down and maybe understand a little bit more, um, what the concerns are. And maybe sim, maybe if we can't, uh, address those concerns with this year's, uh, capital improvements element, uh, we can certainly consider it for next year as part of a, a different, different planning process or different planning program.
I'm just, uh, it's not, I don't have an issue with the capital improvement. I'm, I'm simply making the point that, um, we need to change course, one direction or another. Either we need to start looking at, um, I think I, I, years ago, I actually did some work on the treatment plant back in the nineties when that was built out, and that was supposed to be a huge capacity. And, uh, but now, looking at, at this, it's basically saying that we're not going to be able to meet that, even with the new, with Blue Heron.
Well, I would say that in the, the next ten years, uh, you know, up until our next time, we have to do our year evaluation appraisal report, which is the, every seven years of the cycle, we have to update the comp plan. Our, we checked it out, and we believe we'll be okay up to that point. Beyond that, you know, going out another ten years or so, we, you know, by the end of those extra ten years, and we, we did make a statement here considering, you know, going out to twenty forty, there may be an issue. So again, as a monitoring tool, as we get closer to date, we're really going to need to have to plan out where we're going to find our other additional sources for water, for example, potentially. And we have a consumptive use permit that we received from St. John's Water Management District. You know, after that permit is expired, we're closer to it, we'll have to go back to them and probably get a new, a renewal, so. We look at this every year, and, and there are systems in place, basically, to help us monitor this issue.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we'll open this to the public. Do we have questions? Do we have cards on this?
Yes, Stan Johnston.
Mr. Johnston?
Good evening, Stan Johnston, eight sixty points at Avenue. Uh, I'm a registered professional engineer, and I'd like to speak in that capacity. I'm in a, just, I, I did not prepare for this. I just now wrote notes, these are the notes that I wrote, that are on here scribbling. Uh, and I find nine reasons to, uh, not accept the, um, this, um, uh, comprehensive plan. Uh, and the reasons, I want to read them to you that I wrote down, and, uh, they are as follows. Uh, is that I want you to understand that engineers and the P and Z committee and the P and Z planning and zoning and your zoning depends very much upon accurate firm maps, and that's the flood zone maps. And, uh, I'm an engineer, and I found out in two thousand twelve that our firm maps are incorrect. Although I worked for the city for, uh, over seven years, I didn't know that. So number one, number one is the city has no calculations for these AE zones that are established in the nineteen eighty-nine firm map that were sent forward to the two thousand and fourteen firm maps. They've lost all their information. They don't have it, and they haven't retreated from FEMA. I've, I've, I've mentioned that repeatedly. Number two, the two thousand sixteen Lomar map, no, no, Lomar, that's a letter of map revision, revealed to the city that indeed, they, they had a, a significant error in Baker's property, um, the AE zone. In fact, this, they, the Lomar lowered it by one point one foot. And that removed eighty percent of homes of Baker subdivision from the flood zone. Number three, there isn't, there is an, uh, era exists that was confirmed by the flood zone two thousand sixteen. Well, that's included in what I said in number two. Number four, at the two thousand fourteen firm map was approved above my objections. Uh, and the city sent information to FEMA in March two thousand fourteen. And March two thousand fourteen was the seventeenth, is it, uh, is the official date of, uh, the acceptance of the two thousand fourteen firm map. However, within two weeks of that, a, a letter was sent by, uh, the city to FEMA uh, requesting them to, to look into the, uh, calculations and so forth that was submitted for the AE flood zone uh, with the drainage improvements at the senior center. So that led to that change that I mentioned to you, that it was an error in the firm app. Number five, the city has failed to send information of the dam of Parkland Estates. I'd like to have more time, about, uh, four more minutes to go over these nine items.
Motion to extend four more minutes? Vice Chairman?
My, my main concern with what you're presenting tonight, it doesn't relate to the agenda item. We're considering the capital improvements element, and you're talking more generically about, I'm sorry, second time. You're talking more about the comprehensive plan itself and the basis of the comprehensive plan. And, uh, your remarks should relate to the agenda item, which is, uh, the capital improvements element, uh, as such. And I don't mind giving a couple more minutes, but would respectfully suggest that it should relate to the topic we're considering.
Okay, well, I would, I'd like to show you that it does relate, and I would mention money in it.
Okay. So is there a motion to, and how much time would you like to make that motion for? All right, I'll ask again. Is there a motion to extend this time? All right, Stan.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
I got five of them, so. Okay, is there any more, uh, cards on this?
No, sir.
All right, so we'll close this item to the public? All right. I just make a few comments. Um, like I said, um, I, I, uh, I always kind of like the capital improvement because it kind of lets us know the planning of the city and what projects they're prioritizing, um, and the resources they're adding to it. It also lets me know that who's paying for it. So I do appreciate that. I like it when I see grants, I like when I see state and federal and county. So that's very nice. And it, it does give us an indication of, uh, the goals of the city. So this is, uh, I think, one year, my, one of my first years, it was a bit much for me, but it's not as detailed as what it used to be, so it's a little bit, you've really made it a lot easier to understand. Uh, Vice Chairman?
I think you're probably looking for a motion, is that correct, to make recommendation?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I move that we, uh, recommend approval of this item, uh, to the city council with the notations or corrections that we have related together with, uh, the comments that were made likewise be transmitted on to the city council.
Would you like the B map?
Correct.
Okay.
Second.
All right, take a vote on this, please?
Secretary Richardson?
Yes.
Member Spideau?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Severs?
Yes.
Member Noel Copeland?
Yes.
Chairman Williams?
Yes.
Okay, and we'll go to reports.
Um, the next item is the draft twenty forty comprehensive plan. Uh, this is the same item that you saw at your last meeting. I apologize, I had offered to try and give you a final draft, all the revisions in it, uh, the comprehensive plan for you to look at by tonight's meeting, and was not able to get that completed and reviewed by everybody in our staff in time. Uh, so as soon as it is completed, I'm just going to send it to you regardless of whether it's on agenda or not, so you have it. And then we'll bring it up at another meeting. So what you have here is just what I brought up to you last time. I didn't, uh, put it on there again just to see, uh, if you look on page forty-one, the options, and see if, since our last meeting, if you had any questions or comments or, uh, suggestions or anything you'd like to discuss or ask the city staff related to this. Otherwise, that would be the end of this agenda item for us.
Yeah, I mean, for me, I, I think I would like to, to look at the new draft, you know, with changes. I mean, that's my preference.
Will the, will that version have track changes turned on so we can see what's changed?
That's our intention, yes.
Okay.
Vice Chairman?
As certainly, I'm interested in the new draft and really do not have a problem with, uh, improving the comprehensive plan and making recommendations for improvements of the comprehensive plan over the existing one. There was some discussion in our last meeting, uh, of the options you've presented. Uh, options two and three are more, um, amenable to me. I have, um, I, I think I need the ability to understand how it's going to be implemented. The only way it can really be understood is parts of two and three, as to its impact. In addition, I have a real problem with, uh, implementing through the plan development process because the plan development process that I've experienced thus far being on here, it has very, very, very minimal standards. In addition, the thirty-five percent, um, parks or open space provision is, I understood by now we would have an amendment to that because counting retention ponds, et cetera, as a part of a park's recreational area. I see that as more as a gift to somebody who wants to increase his density or have smaller lots. That's the way it's been applied since I've been on, uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission. And, uh, I really can't support, uh, number one, for that a reason alone because I, it's not been a very successful, uh, and I, if you look at the intent and purpose of the plant, PD, it has very lofty purpose, but people are really not building any more than they can build under R two, R three, or whatever. Other than getting a little more density and smaller lots, even. So I, I don't think it's accomplishing what I envisioned being accomplished with a new, uh, comprehensive plan. Like I said, I, I support the concept where we can approve the comprehensive plan. And I'm looking forward to seeing my, a draft copy with, uh, all the revisions.
Okay. So is there a motion on this item?
Don't need one.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. Yeah, 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 yeah. All right. All right, so we'll go to petitions and requests from public present.
Stan Johnston?
Stan Johnston, I've already introduced myself. Uh, on page seven A, in the, uh, this, it's, it says, uh, in your stormwater master plan I'm reading from, it says, it says, "Maintenance of the system will be required and provisions shall be made to keep all the elements in top operating condition at all times." This is what the city has not been doing. Specifically, uh, it, it's interesting, and it should be interesting and shocking to the P and Z committee that for over forty years now, the last forty years, the city of Titusville has not spent one penny, not one penny, in capital improvements, we just hit, went over, in capital improvements to get one home out of the flood zone, not one penny. That's, has to do with your comprehensive plan. Now, the problem is, is that, is that I've just explained to you just a few minutes ago that indeed, the, the, the firm map has been an error. It's been proved to be an error by the city itself. The, the city hired an engineering company, engineering company addressed council and said, "Listen, city doesn't even have calculations for that AE zone for Baker subdivision." As far as I know, they don't have it for Parkland Estates, they don't have it for, actually, for, for at least six square miles of city property. This should be of interest to the, to the P and Z committee, to you guys. That's what I'm sharing with you. And refuses, the city refuses to spend any money on cleaning the canal's ditches that are in this, in this, uh, stormwater master plan that are outside of city limits to have them cleaned. Said they're supposed to be cleaned, they're not. They're almost, they're, they're, they're in terrible shape. I'm talking about, they're- They're not. They're almost, they're, they're in terrible shape. I'm talking about those specifically. I mean, we've got huge box culverts leading to ditches that are just getting more and more clogged from I-95 to St. John's River that is, that is between Fox Lake Road and State Road 50. That's a big problem. So the city has also refused to spend any money to hire a professional engineer to dispute what I have been writing to them all along. And this has to do with that, this poster. City says, hey, you know, we've paid $70,000 to an independent engineering organization to say, and, and they don't have the report. They can't provide the report. Name the engineers. They don't even have, have a contract for, for doing those, those services which they claimed. So this, I'm asking the city to spend some money to, to, to pay for a professional engineer to dispute me. And they won't do that. I've got some more to add to that, that same thing. It says where the city has more information. One other thing I'd like to add, if I can. I have to get permission now.
All right, so.
I'll move that we give them additional two minutes.
Second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll first.
Thank you. I want you to know that, that when I talked about this March of 2014 in which the city accepted the, the firm map, the AE zones, and then they went ahead in the same month, they submitted information to FEMA and FEMA refused it. Well, it just so happens in that particular case is not only did the city send it to them in 2014, the city had information that said the flood zone for Baker subdivision was wrong and they accepted this information from numerous engineers, and I'll give you four examples. 1985 freshwater management study disputes it. 1992 calculations approved by city also disputes the firm map. 1997 study by, what is it? I can't remember right now. And the 2010 study done by Richard Moon. The 1990 study was, was Richard Lemke, 1997 was post-Buckingham, or PB and, yeah, that's what it was. So, so those are, and then the, the last one, the city paid for it, was 2016. So the city paid six times for the same information that disputes the flood zone and they didn't report to FEMA. That's pretty shocking. Now, the city can't get a professional engineer to disagree with me. That's, I say that's shocking too. It should be shocking to you. They just, you know, the mayor says, hey, you know, Stan Johnston doesn't know what he's talking about, even though he's worked for the city for, for seven years and I've done numerous subdivisions, over a dozen subdivisions in the city of Titusville. So thank you for listening to this and I'm hoping that the possibility, if you can do rule 13, to reconsider what you just approved, maybe you can approve it with conditions of some, some things I just mentioned to you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I see we have some, do we have any more cards on this?
No, sir.
All right, so for those that just came in, we're at the end of the meeting. If you would like to come for petitions and requests from public present, now's the time. Just want to give you the opportunity if you want to come up and say anything. Mr. Mijak? No?
I tried to say this to the city council, but I think it was too much science. Michael Mijak, Alpine Lane, Titusville, and Chair of the Environmental Commission. There was a report that just came out a couple of, I'd say almost a week and a half ago now, that indicates that the world is not on track to meet the global reduction in carbon emissions according to the Paris Accord. The upshot of all of that is that we are currently looking at a three and a half to maybe five degree increase by the end of the century. Anything above two and a half degrees centigrade, we start talking in tenths of a degree and 10,000 species going extinct. The problem is not the world leaders. It's all of the combined local leaders not doing enough. And quite frankly, that's us. It's our city council. We need to move the city to 100% renewable energy ASAP, as soon as possible. We need to move our vehicles over to electric power as quickly as possible and increase our photovoltaic grid on every place that we possibly can so that we can cut our carbon footprint. Every city, every county, every state has to comply because to not do so is fruitless. We just won't survive. So please consider those actions. Think about new homes require some amount of solar photovoltaic panels. They provide emergency power during hurricanes and they can cut our carbon footprint. Think about these things. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you wouldn't mind to, if you'd give her a card so she would pitch.
I'd be happy to.
Thank you. All right, no other, no other takers? None? Okay. All right, so we will, we'll go to city, city staff. We'll go to you first.
I don't have any report, thank you.
Okay, planning?
The only thing I want to mention was that it's today is National Cookie Day and I've left an article for you, for your information, an announcement about that.
Where are the cookies?
Thank you for the carb free cookies. Okay. Mr. Richardson?
Are we going to have another meeting in December?
We do not have any items for the December meeting.
Okay, so, so far?
So far, no.
Okay. That was my only question.
Okay. Member Spideau?
No, I'm, I'm good.
Vice Chairman? Vice Chairman Severs?
Yes, as a follow-up to the last meeting, as all members of the commission know, I handed each one of you a copy of a memorandum that addressed survey datum in Brookshire. I was particularly concerned about the fact that unbeknownst to the Planning and Zoning Commission when we met on October the 2nd, that a permit had already been issued to Brookshire for them to proceed with their development on September 19th, 2019. And it was my understanding that this ordinance that we had worked on and were working on at their request, ordinance 27-2019, would not apply to them. And I would like to either hear from staff or the city attorney's office or anyone, any comments they have concerning my memo to the Planning and Zoning Commission as such.
We did review that information that was provided to us. I believe it was addressed to the commissions. I'm not sure if you were asking for the commission to make a recommend, any direction on it. But best information, response I can provide to you on behalf of the staff is that we have been in discussions with the people at Brookshire about that ordinance and I can certainly find out more information as to what's transpired about that conversation with them. Because they have been made aware of the ordinance. As far as how it would be implemented, I'd have to get back to you to find out for sure.
Well, as, as I assume you would know, since I gave you a copy, I, I attached a copy of the permit. It had certain conditions in it and the conditions as stated in ordinance 27 were not incorporated. And my larger concern, and this is not directed at any particular individual, but my concern is I naively believe that we were working on an ordinance that would have an impact upon that subdivision because they had requested the clarification. And unbeknownst to us, we were not told. Frankly, my motion and my arguments would have been different than I made at the time if I was disclosed the information. I, I labor under the philosophy and have always labored under the philosophy, if you're aware of a material issue of fact that might influence the city council or the commission, that I have an obligation to disclose that because my client, that is the council or the commission, may make a decision on erroneous information or erroneous belief. And to me, the mere fact that this was not going to apply to them, permit had already been issued is a very material issue that should have been disclosed. I certainly can't say anything to our assistant city attorney. She was not here on October the 2nd. You were not at that meeting. But certainly staff was here. I assume you were aware of it. And every, life is built upon trust. And relationships are built upon trust. And I must be able to trust what my wife tells me, my children tell me, and what you tell me. If, if I cannot rely upon trust, then I have to double check everything. I have to double check what my wife says, my child says, what you say. I don't want to live my life that way. And, but, don't, it's, I mean, I'm probably violating your four commandments, but we have to be able to trust one another. And if you're not going to disclose material information in a report or the facts have changed, what am I supposed to do? And maybe, maybe I'm way out in left field. I don't have a clue whether any of the rest of the commissioners feel the same way I do. But I always give every individual the benefit of the doubt, whether it's in my church committees I go to, other committee organizations. But if I find they're not being honest with me, then I really check everything and I'm that kind of fellow. Right or wrong, I'm that kind of fellow. And I have to be able to rely upon the information. And, and the Willow Creek report that was recommended for approval of changing those parks in the sketch plan to some other lots, there was no mention in that report whatsoever that those community parks as shown on the sketch plan were going away. There was no mention of that whatsoever. And I'm just telling you my expectations. Perhaps I have the wrong expectations, but, and perhaps nobody wants to say anything. That's fine. But you know where I stand, right or wrong. You know where I stand. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Maybe there was a go back, Mr. Secretary Richardson? Did you have a go back there?
Yes, I, I agree with everything Mr. Severs has said. And I too, I don't know if it's take offense, but, you know, I have problems when the development order was issued three weeks before we had a public hearing. We should have been told that it had already been issued.
They're good? Okay. Member Noel Copeland?
No report.
Okay. So, yeah, I wanted to tag on a little bit on that. It was a little, it struck me a little odd as well. So, you know, it would be nice if maybe we could get something, some explanation of how things went down. What, what I did find odd is when you have, when does these codes apply? When you have something in the works and you've broken ground, I, because I thought, I did consider this at the time. Does that code apply when they've already started the development? But they, I guess they didn't have a development order. So I would kind of like to know, when does the codes kick in, new codes kick in into developments that are existing? And how would that apply to, to that? Because, you know, I can understand if, if a code hasn't passed yet and then you've started something or something is going through and they kind of cross, I can understand that. And it is odd because we did see them at the meeting and so it was important to them, but don't know. And that was all I had, so we were adjourned. Thank you.